Tracy, time to get started. Welcome. Well, we gotta turn on the legal button. Is the legal button on?
It is. Carry on, sir.
Thank you. Welcome to the August meeting of the Glen Rock zoning board of adjustment. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Born?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Shineller?
Here.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Here.
Mr. Story Alley?
Here.
Mr. Chadwick?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. Sunshine Law, please.
In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, which went into effect January 19th, 1976, I hereby state that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: posting of the notice on the bulletin board outside these chambers, mailing of the notice to the Ridgewood News, and filing of the notice outside the Borough Clerk's Office on January 17th, 2025. In addition to the foregoing, a notice was posted on the bulletin board in January of 2025, setting forth the regularly scheduled meetings for the year. A copy of this schedule was published in the Bergen Record on January 16th, 2025.
Thank you. We have the minutes for the July 2nd work session and the July 10th regular meeting have been distributed. Can I get a motion to approve them as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll, please.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Born was not here.
You just crossed me out.
Yep, I would cross you out, thank you.
Responded too fast.
That's okay.
Under all business, 97 Rock Road Memorializing Resolution approving the requested variance for a side yard setback. Can I have a motion to approve it as drafted?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Call or roll.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, my agenda, is a request for reconsideration by the folks at 163 Delmar Avenue. Somebody has to tell me these secrets.
I'm sorry.
Yes, me too.
We forgot, yeah.
All right. We're going to discuss firstly, I want a straw poll vote amongst the board, just a quick show of hands, that the members are in favor of hearing the reconsideration. Can I see a show of hands? Yes? Okay, we've got enough to approve it. That's fine. Mr. Alampi, you're up. I do ask you to keep it as brief as possible.
And if you could please, yep, thank you, turn the mics on, thanks, and speak closely to them.
You were excellent. I listened to every word on the tape.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Alampi, do you want me to swear Mr. Leekend again?
We can swear him. I don't know if we're gonna need testimony, but we can swear him in just case he starts.
Can you state your address, your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my current address is 209 Ninth Avenue, Delmar, New Jersey. My name is Arnold Leekend.
And can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you make sure that if you do speak, you speak directly into the microphone? Anybody who's coming up to speak all night, please just speak slowly and directly into the microphone so we can get everything that everyone says? Thank you.
Could you please turn his on also? Thank you. You'll probably need to hold yours. Thank you.
Always felt they should make them longer.
I'm sorry.
Chair, members of the board, thank you for hearing us. I heard, obviously, the chairman's straw vote, so I can just get right into testimony. I do have our landscape architect, we had submitted a landscape plan, so if we can have Ben come up. Ben, I'm gonna ask that you sit at this table. Turn the mic on for you. And if we can have Ben sworn in, we'll get his credentials on the record.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ben Heller, H-E-L-L-E-R.
And your-
105 Dean Road, Mendham, New Jersey.
And do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Alampi, you wanna qualify him real quick?
Sure. Just before I do that, can we mark the notices A1? We did provide notice to all of the people within 200 feet, published it in the newspaper, so we've submitted that. I believe it's been checked, but for purposes of the record, I'd ask that we mark that as A1. Mr. Heller, can you provide the board with the benefit of your licensing, and I guess we can go back and give some educational background?
Absolutely. I am a graduate of Rutgers University Landscape Architecture Program. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. I've been licensed since 2017. This is my 12th municipality that I'll be testifying before, and I'm the former chairman of the planning board of West Orange.
Counsel, I ask that the board accept him. Thank you.
And I assume whatever license you hold is in good standing.
It's in good standing.
Thank you.
Mr. Heller, we had submitted both a planting plan as well as a scheduling plan with our request for the reconsideration, so Chair, I'm gonna ask that we mark that as A2 and A3 for purposes of the hearing, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Heller to walk us through it. So what's on the board is what was submitted. Can you tell us the date of that plan?
Sure. This plan is dated 7/18/2025.
Mr. Heller, you were retained for the purpose of preparing this plan. Was there anything that you did with respect to preparing the plan in terms of speaking with anybody, given any direction, anything of that nature?
Absolutely. I took a site visit to the property, and in addition, I met with homeowners in the adjacent areas and neighbors of the area as well.
Okay. And based on your charge, you prepared the plan with various plantings. Is that fair?
Yes.
Can you take the board through the planting, the schedule, what it shows?
Sure. What this plan shows, for the sake of this plan, I'm just gonna call top, bottom, right, and left. The top is the east, the bottom is the west, the left is the north, and the right is the south. So to the right of the property, the setbacks are such that the side yards, excuse me, the side yards are such that I would like to propose an upright evergreen screening, shrub. This shrub is called a skip laurel. It's marked as prunus on the plan. There are 15 on the left, nine on the right. That's just sort of how the home lays out on the property. The intention of what we're trying to do is screen the property from the surrounding neighbors. These plants that I proposed are usually used as screen plants. The intent is that they are evergreen, they stay green all year round, and that they will grow and, from day one, which I will go through, will provide adequate screening, but then continue to grow and provide even more screening as they grow. All of these plants are somewhat upright in nature. They're designed sort of to grow into one another, let's call it, and create sort of an evergreen hedge. So as I get back to it, the left and the right, the side yards, I'm proposing a skip laurel and upright evergreen shrub. And in the back, we're proposing a green giant arborvitae, which is extremely common in the area. We're proposing planting, planting that at eight to 10 feet tall, which is a relatively tall evergreen tree. They will grow, so let's talk through that. The green giants have a growth rate of three to four feet when irrigated. There is irrigation on the property. We will irrigate these plants as well. We'll run a drip line through them. They grow at about three to four feet tall a year. It's a rather quick growing tree. The trick with planting them in general, you plant them nice and tight, and a lot of people will say, well, what about when they grow into each other? These trees are, stay a little bit more upright in nature so that we end up with a very symmetrical green hedge, tall green hedge. In addition to that, there's a small little planting bed that's actually to the rear of the property line. There's a small three-foot retaining wall, then there's a little two-foot landing, and another three-foot retaining wall that's on this property. That creates a nice little planting bed. What we're proposing is a butterfly bush, which is a relatively low maintenance plant. You can trim it back, you don't have to, and it flowers every year. I say relatively low maintenance. Once established, they're pretty good to go. There are additional plants that we're proposing after our meetings with the neighbors, which we will amend our plans for the sake of documenting that. The property that's to the left of us, the homeowners had requested that we upsize this large shrub, which right now is proposed to be at four to five feet from day one, that we propose upsizing that to about eight to 10 feet. That is a very tall shrub. They do exist. They're gonna be a little bit difficult to find that high, but we will go and we will find them. We have plenty of connections throughout the nurseries to make sure that we can get them, so that these 15 shrubs also provide an immediate day-one screen of eight to 10 feet in addition to the remaining trees throughout. As I take you through some of the photos, so that you can sort of see what we have here, this is the green giant arborvitae that I just proposed.
So, Mr. Heller, just for the record, the photographs that you're showing are what we've marked as A3. That is the planting schedule that was submitted with the plan?
Correct, yes. This is the planting schedule and has photos of each of these plants that are being proposed. In this picture, you can see the green giant arborvitae. They are, in this photo, give or take about 12 feet, a little bit tough to tell exactly, but they're about 12 feet. In the photo, you can sort of see how much it actually blocks. Again, this isn't exactly the house that we have here on this property, but it's relatively close. And you can see how much of an actual dense evergreen hedge it actually creates. The next picture in this little page of images is the skip laurel. These are about four to five feet in the can, which is what we call them in the nursery, and then you can see sort of how, when they're planted, again, they create sort of a very evergreen hedge screen. And again, as we mentioned, we'll be planting them at eight to 10 feet along the left and four to five feet along the right. And then in the last page, there's just a couple images of butterfly bush, again, a flowering beautiful shrub, relatively hardy. They do attract the monarch butterfly, and another beautiful shrub, like I mentioned, that we're proposing sort of along the back. And that is what we've got. In addition to what we're showing here, there is an area that the property owners on the left have asked that we fill in. They have an existing forsythia row of bushes. Forsythia are yellow, one of the first to come around in the spring. They get kind of showy, and they can get rather kind of tall as well. I believe we're gonna need about five of them to fill in the gap that they have on their property. We've agreed to do that as part of this application. And in addition, they've also asked for two cherry trees be planting in the rear of their property to add even another layer of screening, and we've agreed to do that as well. I will update the plan to reflect that. That was sort of a little bit of a last-second add, so happy to do that.
So, the cherry trees are going on, thank you, the cherry trees are going on the neighbor's property?
Correct, as a request from the neighbors, yeah.
And the forsythia is on the neighbor's property as well?
Correct.
Assuming it's to the left of-
Correct, yep. Trying to be as good neighbors as we possibly can. Again, we had the neighbor meeting, and these were some of the things that came up, was one of the requests, and we're happy to do that.
I have two other quick comments. Can I ask them? Okay. Are you certain that all of the shrubs and butterfly, I know butterfly bushes that you have mentioned, will be readily available?
We're, yep, sorry.
Okay. And if they're not, what would be your plan B?
So, we're about to enter the fall dig period, which is when we sort of see the nursery stock come back to being a little bit more vibrant than it has been during the last month or so, because nurseries got a little bit hot. We should be able to find most of this. As I mentioned, the skip laurels that are eight to 10 feet are gonna be a little tricky. Should we need to, we can, you know, if we're able to, we would wait till the spring before the next dig.
But as you said, they're a fast grower.
They're a fast grower, yeah, yeah. They're a fast grower, absolutely.
And my second, my final point is, along with the irrigation system, is there one in place now, or is this part of your project?
There is an irrigation system. We'll amend it by adding drip irrigation. There's spray heads that exist throughout the property.
To fit and reach everything you've just described.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah. The spray heads right now that exist are for the lawn areas, so we'll actually just tap off of them, which is very common, which is what you do when you add a planting area in the landscape, and we'll add drip irrigation, specifically drip for the trees and shrubs, because that's what they'll like a little bit more than spray heads.
Thank you.
The butterfly bushes need to be maintained?
They can. Happy to do it if we need to.
I'm just, like Chairman, how do they access them?
Well, that's, that's, that's why I picked, that's specifically why I picked butterfly bushes, because they don't have to be. They can sort of get tall and kind of, right now, there's three feet to get to the first wall, then there's a little two-foot area, and then there's another three feet, and then there's a four-foot fence on top of that. So the intent is that as those butterfly bushes get big, the neighbor in the rear wouldn't actually see the fence, and it would actually kind of blend in nicely with the sort of evergreen hedge that we've created up top. You don't necessarily need to cut the butterfly bushes back. You can let them go. That's why I specifically picked that plant, because I didn't want to have to pick something that we'd be cutting back.
Questions and comments from the board?
One of the things discussed initially was an irrigation to be put in when this was brought up at the last meeting, that that would be something. Why wasn't that in the plans to begin with?
No, the irrigation system is there.
Well, we talked about that when it came up at the last meeting, that it would need an irrigation system in order. So I'm just asking why those aren't in this plan already?
So when you plant something, you actually, specifically with a drip irrigation system, you actually want the trees to go in first before you actually put the drip around them?
But you're saying you have to amend it, the plans, to show an irrigation system?
No, I have to amend the system itself.
Got it.
I'm sorry. It's like a common, call it like a maintenance-type thing, that an irrigation company comes out and actually taps the line, and then they, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but they actually run little rings around each of the trees. So that's why you wait for them to be planted first before you actually, you do them. You want to make sure that you have the rings of the drip right around each of the trees.
A little bit of questions from the board. Do you have questions of this witness from the audience? Questions, not comments, please. I see none. Okay. Just open public.
Mr. Chairman, I have no, I have no questions of this witness, but I do have my client that wants to maybe make a quick comment or statement.
I just want to explain how we got to this point. As the board knows, I learned of this problem after I closed on the sale of my home in North Brunswick. I've had a bit of a challenging relationship with the-
Can you pull the mics closer and it'll go over the loudspeaker?
Okay.
Thank you.
I first learned of this problem after I closed on the sale of my home in North Brunswick, and I think it prompted me to call Tracy or the attorney for the borough, I forget who I called. But in any event, I raised it with the builder, who I've had a bit of a challenging relationship with. His solution was to make interior changes, which I frankly thought it was nothing that I wanted. I didn't think that would accommodate some of the concerns that we heard last week. And then the neighbors were kind enough to meet with my wife and me, probably the way that they want.
Gotta face the microphone.
I'm sorry. The neighbors were kind enough to meet with my wife and me, and then the builder, at our request, enlisted Mr. Heller, and that's how we got to this point and what prompted our request to reconsider, by adding significant landscaping to try and mitigate what the board and some of the neighbors expressed as their concerns. So, thank you.
So Chair, I would ask that we open it to the public. I don't want to speak for the neighbors. Artie and Sharon have spent a lot of time working and talking with both Ben, and I believe the neighbors. I've tried to stay clear and not, you know, mess anything up as I tend to do, so I don't want to speak for them. I'd rather they come up. We continue to be willing to work with them, but whatever they feel, I think they can express themselves. I don't want to speak for them. But I would just ask that I be given a couple of minutes at the end to sum up, and then we'll submit.
I think we're at that point right now. Anybody, any of the neighbors, any of the public that would like to make a comment about this proposal?
If you could please turn it on and speak very closely and loudly, thank you.
Just before you start, I just need your name and address, and if you could spell your name.
Steve Miller.
Yep. You don't have to spell it. I got it.
There's plenty of them around.
Okay.
Lisa Miller.
Okay, I think I got it. You're good. Okay. Address, please?
155 Delmar Avenue.
Thank you. Can you both raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. So, this is just gonna be, you know, short and sweet, because, you know, we went through all the issues last time. What we asked for was if there was, you know, conditional variance, just based on, you know, creating a satisfactory buffer for us, so we can, you know, mitigate the privacy issue of our backyard. Okay? So this plan, and, you know, between Mr. Heller here and some other landscaper, you know, that I had spoken to, and a little combination of that, this plan, you know, gives us that, you know, privacy back that, you know, that we were looking for. Okay? What?
Just speak very closely.
Okay. So, so this, this plan, you know, and, you know, subject to any, you know, some of these modifications that Ben just discussed, is acceptable to us. You know, it'll, it'll reinvigorate our backyard, and it'll, you know, give us that, that privacy that we thought we were gonna lose and we hope to, you know, regain at this point. And that's it. You know, I don't have anything else. Thank you. Thank you, board. I really appreciate all your time and efforts on this.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment?
Speak your name and address, please.
Yes, William Rafferty, R-A-F for Frank, T for Thomas, E-R-Y. I'm at 136 Hillman Avenue.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a very short statement. Probably the most important thing that we have learned since I attended the previous board meeting is that if the Delmar House must be brought into compliance, that that would not affect the exterior dimensions or bulk of the house. Any modifications involving reducing available living space would take place inside and would not have any impact on us as neighbors. The overall impact, then, can only be relieved by, in my view, and my wife's view, by the planting shrubbery to provide additional privacy to us. We've looked at this comprehensive plan that was submitted by the landscape architect, and we find that it seems to be well thought out and a good-faith effort to provide us with some semblance of privacy. From our perspective, the real problem here lies with the planning board in permitting oversized structures of this type to be built without any consideration of the context. The elevation of our property compared to the 163 Delmar property has a difference of six feet. So the house on Delmar towers over our property by 29 feet. That's something that I think the planning board needs to consider going forward, and I realize that it's not an issue for this board. But if you choose to go forward and permit the variance, we would not object to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
My name is Deborah Walker. I live at 142 Hillman Avenue in Glen Rock.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have to agree with Bill Rafferty. The house is built on a very high hill compared to his house, as well as my house, and every time I go in my backyard, the only view I see right now is the new house. I've lost all my privacy in the backyard, and Arnold has been wonderful, along with his family, to provide combinations for that in terms of putting in wonderful shrubbery and bushes. And I and my husband, who's not here with us right now, we both approve this, and we hope you will all reconsider and allow for his variance to go through. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment from the public? Okay. Seeing no one else, is there any other comments from the board? Would you like to make final comments, sir?
Thank you, Chair. I think the members of the public said everything that I would say. The benefit to the community is what we're talking about under the C2 criteria. Can the variance be granted because of the benefit to the community as a whole? I think the answer, based on the comments of the public, is overwhelmingly yes. These are the people that are impacted. They're directly next to this property. They're asking the board to grant the variances, to allow this to take place. They seem to recognize and understand that, however we got here, the fix is either internal to the structure or the plantings that they benefit from. So I would just ask that the board to focus on that, and, again, under the C2, we're trying to balance, right? The grant must benefit the community. That's what we've heard, backed by the very people impacted by the variance. So with that, I'll submit to the board, and I just ask that the board reconsider it in light of the testimony and grant the variance.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask for a motion, I do want to make a statement that the voting for reconsideration is sometimes different, or different than what you might expect. Okay? So it will be the exact same members who voted the first time will vote this time. I was not present at that point, and I will not be voting during this. Okay? Now, with having said that, does someone want to make a motion in terms of this?
I need to kind of know what we're voting. Are we voting to overturn what we did? Are we?
You can, you can, first of all, you can discuss it if you'd like for a few minutes. So that's first. Second of all-
That's essentially what I'm doing now.
Okay. I'm just laying that out for you. And then second, once you've discussed, or if you feel that you do not need to discuss, you can make a motion, and you can either make a motion to grant the application based on the testimony you heard during the reconsideration hearing, or you can make a motion to uphold the decision of denial, which was the prior decision. You can word that however you want, but that's essentially, those are the two options, or unless you come up with another one.
No, I just wanted, the right way to word it was what I was looking for.
Yeah, so that would be a motion to grant based on the testimony and information that was provided this evening, or the alternative. Okay.
Are there any other comments on the board or discussion?
I have a comment. In regard to your letter of July 26th, your prospective homeowner says he could and would seek to satisfy ECFAR by eliminating interior space. Is that still the case?
Okay, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that?
Yes. The letter that we received for reconsideration on July 26th, it goes into the current owner would not have to make exterior changes to the size or scale, nor would the footprint be- or scale, nor would the footprint be reduced. He would and could consider to satisfy EGFOR by eliminating interior space."
Interiors.
Correct. If the variance is not granted, that was going to have to be the course forward for the structure.
Was that true a month ago?
So that's not already...
I'm not the owner. I'm not the owner, I'm just a buyer, but I did speak to him.
Right.
And I said to him, "What are you gonna do?" I said, "Look, I'm not buying it if you do that," but he said he can't chop away the house, so what he would do is make more cathedral ceilings.
Well, and from a practical standpoint, if the house has to change, it has to change. So that would be the way to get the EGFOR into compliance, right? We have to, it's an internal control. It's not external. So somehow, this livable, usable space, habitable space has to come out inside the four walls, which all comply with all the setbacks.
The exterior complies.
Yes, yes. Does your builder understand that or cooperate in regard to that?
I'm sorry?
Does the builder cooperate in regard to that?
Cooperate in regard to what?
Your relationship with him is such that you can...
Right now, he's been very cooperative, the landscaping, if it's approved, he's doing, he's paying for it, and I can't complain about the way he's behaved since the problem, since I learned of the problem.
Well, I have to say that your neighbors have been very cooperative and...
Absolutely. Could not have denied it.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Very much so.
However, that wasn't the point of meeting with us in regard to landscaping.
Right.
Ours was the variance.
Right.
And I wish our role was such that we could expand, but we have to follow the book.
So I would say that granting the variance is following the book. Under the C2 criteria, it's about the benefit to the community. That's what the evidence and the proofs and the testimony have shown. So I would say that the board is absolutely in compliance and in accordance with the law if they grant the variance. If they don't grant the variance, I would respectfully say that I don't agree from a legal standpoint with that decision, from a legal standpoint. So...
But I think what the board has to consider is, you're right, you're making the case for C2, but we have to put that up against the fact of the excessive size of the variance. We have to weigh that, and whether it overrides it or not. In other words, the burden of proof is on you to tell us, or convince us that the C2 variance is there.
That's the only testimony we've heard of.
We may all have our own opinions on that, but we also have other things to weigh in terms of our decision.
Correct.
And that's what I think Kate was trying to say. If I could just, because I happen to be a lawyer as well, and I do land use principally litigation, so the C2 criteria says, do the benefits of the variance outweigh the detriments? Given the current situation, if it were a hardship, we wouldn't even be here, we couldn't, never satisfy that. So I agree, the board has to weigh the detriments versus the benefits, but right now, without the variance, the house ends up being what it is on the exterior. Whatever happens in the interior, I don't know, whereas if the variance is granted, you then alleviate the concerns that the neighbors have that we convinced the developer to try and do.
Which is the better zoning alternative for the property and the benefit to the community, in our opinion.
No, I respect your opinion, but there's other opinions too.
Nobody can, I don't think this side...
Today, you're not really working well, I literally need you to, like, do this, so it goes like overhead, please. It's not picking it up.
Okay. Any other comments, wait, comments down here? Okay. And is there anyone who will make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd just like to say that, you know, as counsel has told us, the house is what the house is. You know, you're not going to, you know, you're still gonna look at the exterior of the house. The neighbors, the people most impacted by it, have been satisfied. They've been consulted, they're, seem to be on board with what they're doing. You know, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, it's the same builder, same thing going on again, that someone has to, we can't do anything about it, unfortunately. Having said that, and being the neighbors are satisfied, I'm gonna, you know, make a motion that we allow or approve, thank you, approve the application as submitted, and let them...
With, well, with, you mean, as submitted, tonight?
Correct, as submitted tonight.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion, based on the testimony that we heard tonight from especially the immediate neighbors who have been impacted the most, and I do feel that the situation is hard to deal with, but this addresses the negative criteria of the situation, and it's a good solution for a bad situation, and I think it'll look beautiful. That's why I second it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
I'd just like to add that, as much as we here would like to kind of punish the builder, we can't. It's not us to do that. So we, you know, we have to basically just look at our immediate criteria, not to try to send a message to the guy who's done this several times.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Katie?
Yes.
Because normally, the, he's not in it, normally the chair is the tiebreaker, so am I doing it in, I'm gonna start here, and then, okay. Okay, Mrs. Chen?
No.
Mrs. Shineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
No.
Mr. Story Alley?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Four, no, three, yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next order of business would be block 213 lot 10. That application has been withdrawn for the time being.
No, withdrawn permanently.
I'm sorry, withdrawn permanently. I stand corrected. That brings us to block 243, lot 13, 160 Chadwick Place, Mr. Bella.
Good evening. Hello?
I'm sorry, we just, we'll do it.
All right. One other thing before you start, Scott, just give me a moment. This has been a transition meeting for this board because we lost our chairperson last month to cancer, and we'd just like to ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment in honor of Diane, who we will always miss. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bella?
Begin.
Okay, I just need you both to state your name and addresses for the record, Mr. Bella.
Yeah, Scott Bella, B-E-L-L-A, 65, Glen Avenue, Glen Rock.
Joseph Reynolds, 160 Chadwick Place, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Can you just spell your last name for me, please?
R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S.
And can you both raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're here this evening asking for a rear yard variance as it relates to a project that has been built, and as originally designed, this project was proposed to have a bay window or a bay boxed-out window in the rear of the property, and it was originally designed to be a cantilever, which would have been allowed to overhang into the setback by two feet. Unfortunately, the plans went out and the foundation followed that bay window around, and that triggered the variance. Basically, it was picked up in the as-built. So again, it was a mistake in terms of the plans, and this is a crawl space, it's not a basement by any means, and the surveyor had picked it up as a 1.9 encroachment into the rear yard setback. This rear yard setback is facing the duck pond, so it's not affecting any neighbors, and the nearest walkway is about 300 to 400 feet away, so you basically can't see it from the public's perspective. And that's why we're here this evening. I'll just speak briefly to C1 criteria and C2 criteria. C1, we do have a undersized lot where 14,000 on a corner lot is the requirement, we're at 11,000, and we do have an odd-shaped lot in the sense that we're on a corner, and one of the side yard property lines is angled towards the back, so we do have a little bit of a hardship in that we're undersized for that reason. And as far as C2, I don't see any detriment here because nobody's really getting affected. It's maybe an eight-foot wide by one foot nine bump out, which is a bay window, and it basically has a foundation under it, and it should not have had this foundation under it. It should have been a cantilever, and at that point, it would have been approved, or we would not have to be here this evening. So basically, that's it.
Is this one of those situations, is this one of those situations where a foundation survey would have eliminated the problem before it got any further?
100%.
Yeah.
Yes. If it got caught early, we would have picked up on it, we picked up on it after the project was done, that's when the surveyor came in, yeah.
Foundation locations are not required for additions, and in theory, this wasn't the addition that was the issue, it was just the window.
I know they're not required, but there isn't a case where we don't recommend it to people. Okay. Any thoughts, comments, please?
Was it originally shown with foundation?
Yeah, we presented, yeah, originally designed without a foundation, but the construction drawing showed it with the foundation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it did go out on site, the builder did not, did not build it that way, it was built according to the plan.
Okay, so, so one-point foundation?
It was an oversight.
One-point foundation was shown there, and...
Correct.
The guy just built, okay.
He built what he was building.
Right, that's what I was just curious, as to whether he decided or, whether he followed the plan or not.
He did, yes.
Did the zoning site plan show it as a bay window with no foundation?
Yeah.
The construction pages showed it.
That's, that's what happened, yeah.
Comments down this end of the board? That way? Any comments, questions? Well, let's, let's put this in order. Any questions from the public of the witness? Okay? Any comments from the public about the situation, the application? Okay, thank you, seeing and hearing none. No more, anything further from the board? And is there anyone willing to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion then, that the application of Joseph Reynolds, 160 Chadwick Place, be approved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Take the roll, please.
It was Mark?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had an easy night tonight, Scott.
I'll be back later.
Yeah, he's not done.
Oh, that's true, I'm not looking yet.
First one's easy.
The first half of the night was easy. Okay, block 62, lot 9, 71 Greenway Road, application of Richard and Celia Weyner. Welcome.
Thank you.
We don't bite, it just sounds like it.
Oh, if you could just turn your mic on, please, and put it close to you.
Then I'll have everybody state their name and address, we'll just start this way, and then I'll swear you all in, good? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, to proceed?
I think so.
Gary Irwin, last name I-R-W-I-N, 11 Fern Cliff Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. I'm the architect for the project, testifying, offering expert testimony on the application. Do you need to qualify me?
We will, I'll come back to you in one minute, yes.
Celia LaRiccia Weyner, 71 Greenway Road.
Richard Weyner, 71 Greenway Road.
Okay, can you all raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Irwin, I don't think you've been here ever?
Ever, no.
Okay, at least not since I've been here, so do you want to provide us with a little bit of your background?
Sure. I graduated from New Jersey School of Architecture in 1983 and been an architect since then. I've been licensed since 1989 in New Jersey, and after that, I obtained licenses in New York and Maryland also. I have a planner's license in New Jersey also. I've been doing residential work since 1984, mostly, and worked for a variety of firms. I've been on my own since 1999 completely, with 75% of my work being residential, the other 25 being commercial, industrial, other stuff, and I've been for other board of adjustments in other towns in Bergen County, probably 20 or 25 times.
All right, thank you very much. Your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. You all have the little set of drawings here, at 11 by 17. I assume everybody looked at them and hopefully understands them, so I want to explain the intent here first. We have a small, one-car garage with a little cupboard area on the back of an existing house that we needed to remove to provide a larger kitchen that was more functional for the owner, a bathroom on the first floor, and a bedroom and bathroom upstairs. So that was the request. Now, there was no way to provide a solution that would conform. If you look at the first page of the site plan I have in blue, a dotted line which represents the billable area in the, on the property, which is only 960 square feet. So I believe the zoning requires 1,500 square foot minimum for a two-story house in the town, so there's not enough billable area on the lot to even build something that conforms, so any kind of modification isn't going to comply. My goal was to have the least impact at all on any variances needed to give the client what they were looking for. So we're obviously applying for a hardship variance. Now, hardship issues would be the non-conforming lot, it's 14,000 square feet is required on a corner lot, we have 8,062, which is significantly less than what the requirement is, so that makes it hard to make anything conform. Of course, as represented in the prior application, it's a corner lot, and it's an irregular corner lot, which is an additional hardship because the usable space is compromised with the two front yard setbacks, and I think that represents the extent of the hardships we're hoping you would consider. So what we chose to do, the only choice really was to request this rear yard setback variance, and we're conforming with the one side yard setback. We've identified the side yard on Glen Boulevard as the rear yard, and we're requesting a variance for 20 feet where 30 is required. So if you look at the second page, you see the proposed addition, where these things are all identified, and the table identifies what all the new measurements were. We conformed with the air conditioning relocation by putting it in a compliant location on the side yard, where a six-foot setback is required. We have, I believe I haven't identified... believe I haven't identified, more than six feet. I don't remember what the number is. The front yard, we need a variance for the front yard for a covered stoop. We actually have an open coverage stoop right now that we want to create a vestibule so they can have protection entering into the house. And we're coming out a couple feet there to provide a little more space to get in the house. Since we're at a 50-foot setback, we're really 44.5. There's quite a bit of a setback. It's something that would be de minimis in appearance. It's not going to be detrimental to anybody or recognizable that we've taken a couple feet, or I think one foot six inches of extra space, from what is existing there right now. We have the addition on the back, which we're going for a 20.25-foot setback, where I believe 37.5 feet is required, but the application says 35 feet is required. There's a definition for the second side yard setback on the corner lot, which says no less than 35 feet, but it also says two-thirds of the required yard, which would be 37.5. So I don't know which one is the one to go by.
We've had both apply. In general, I use the 35 feet as a second front yard, although the other section says the two-thirds, which would be 37.5. We've used 35 before.
Okay. So my calculation, when I said there's only 960 square feet of billable, or there's 510 square feet of billable area, is based on a 37.5-foot requirement on that side, not a 35-foot requirement. So not that that's a critical number in the whole application, it's just to make a point on the billable area we have on this specific piece of property. So our addition unfortunately comes to 20.25 feet on that side, but the existing condition is like 20.91. So it's a slight additional encroachment, two stories, not one story. So there's more building volume there, but it's a similar setback to what exists. And I'd like to point out, we already have existing structure, 16.2 feet from that same side yard. So we're not making any greater nonconformity. We're just adding more construction in a nonconforming area that isn't the most, the largest encroachment that currently exists on the property. So we need that. The driveway, we're trying to provide a driveway that meets their needs better, and I believe we have a conforming layout proposed, where we don't have a driveway wider than 20 feet for the first 16 feet into the property. And we don't have a driveway that exceeds 25 feet in an overall width, so that works out well. And do I need to go over the specific numbers of the encroachments, like the front porch I went over briefly, but specifically, the existing porch width that encroaches into the required front yard is allowed to be seven feet. We're currently 9.19 feet, which is nonconforming, but we're reducing it to 6.75 feet. So we technically eliminated a nonconformity there, but our projection is going out further. The projection allowed is five feet. The current projection is 6.6 feet, and we're going out 9.6 feet. So we increased that encroachment by three feet, which I pointed out will be not a big encroachment because it's a small piece of one-story construction on a very deep front yard setback already. And when you compare it to the one house next door, it won't be able to be noticed, I think, by anybody that we've encroached that additional three feet. To make the case for how this isn't detrimental, one thing that I always consider is, are we overbuilding on the piece of property? And keep in mind that we have a very small piece of property already, much smaller than what is required in the zone. And things that are very important in this municipality are like your building structure coverage. We're going to 15.82%. We're only increasing it by 1.87, and 25% is allowed. So we still have over 740 square feet of available building structure coverage on the lot if this application is approved, as is. Improved lot coverage, similar situation. We're going to 26.29%, where 50% is allowed. So an increase of 3.14%, which is really de minimis, leaving like 1,900 square feet of additional improved lot coverage. So we're well under what should be permitted with respect to building size for this lot. And of course, your EGFR, we're well under with that also. We have a proposed EGFR of 28.37, and the permitted is 36.79. So we still have 678 square feet of building area we could add. So our building's small for what the lot really is. And the encroachment on the front, I don't think impacts anybody at all, being as the setback is 50 feet. It's so far away from the house across the street, nobody's going to care. The encroachment on the back, we have 20 feet. There's the one house on the other side. I don't recall how far that house is, but I didn't feel that that was a negative impact on them. And the side yard on Greenway, we comply. So it seems like a reasonable application to me.
Okay. Any questions from up here on the board? I think they're all trying to absorb everything you just threw out.
Could you maybe comment in terms of the impact on the neighbors? I mean, I looked, the house on Glen Boulevard seems to be quite a bit away, you know, from the area of, you know, your addition.
You mean their backyard neighbor on Glen Boulevard?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm looking at those two neighbors. In your opinion, you know, are they, would they be negatively impacted, you know, by the addition?
Well, the addition is actually only a few feet closer to that residence than what's currently there. It is two stories, but it's just a little bit closer. So I don't think it's anything detrimental. There's a couple of trees in there too, so visually there's some visual blockage to see that. And when I was walking around the site myself, I look at these things, and I have my own opinion on what's good and what's bad, and I don't perceive that being an unpleasant solution to the problem.
What about the neighbor, the next-door neighbor on Greenway?
On Greenway, that house, I believe, is like 21 feet away currently. So we're going to get a few feet closer. Most of our additional encroachment is behind their house, actually. Maybe there's an overlap of about seven or eight feet, where they will be approximately 17 feet apart. But it's conforming. It's, I don't think it's an invasion onto their privacy. Their windows are primarily on the back of their house. Their living space is behind their house. It didn't seem like it was an unreasonable amount of additional construction in that proximity.
My final question is, in looking at what the applicant wants to do, was there any other realistic or other alternative way to do what they wanted to do, but given where the house is and the property and the hardship?
No. I tried to make it as small as I could. I gave, I added a conforming garage, where they had a nonconforming garage, and a one-car garage is a requirement in the town, so we eliminated that nonconformity. It was really all based on that. We made it as small as it could be so they could get the functional kitchen they wanted. They had a full bathroom in there, so that in the future, should they need to, they could live on the first floor, because currently they only have a powder room down there, which is very small.
Right.
And the whole functional layout of the existing kitchen, if you look at the further plans, it's not a really well-laid-out kitchen.
No.
It's very bizarre. So we've been able to give them a very nice layout here that will serve them years with their grandchildren coming, living in the area. That was the goal.
Understood. I certainly have, this is really a rarely shaped, rare-shaped property. I haven't seen quite a challenge.
And there's no other direction we could build. We can't build forward, of course. We can't make a bigger second floor without expanding the footprint.
Right.
So there's no great answer. This is my great answer.
Any questions down here? Comments? Let's clarify it that way. Does the public have any questions of this witness? Does the public wish to make any comments on this application? Come forward, please.
Just state your name and address, please.
Sure. Brad Buckman, 77 Greenway Road.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Just to give you a little history here. So this house is the reason why I live in Glen Rock. I actually went to go buy that house, and it's really a tough conforming lot. So I ended up buying the house next door, which is kind of what brought me here. So I understand what they're trying to do here, and it's a challenging, I'm sure you see the plot plans, it's a challenging lot. So it'd be nice to fix it up a bit, for sure. So I'm just here to really say that I understand what they're doing. I just wanted to focus on one small thing, if I could. The air conditioning units. I think they're on the other side of the house, which today is nonconforming, and they want to move it closer to my side, which would be conforming. So I'm actually asking if the board could consider if they could get a variance to kind of keep them where they are, if that would, I think that would be better for both of us, actually, so that we can enjoy the backyards a bit more. And I think where they want to put it today would be right outside my living room and dining room. So I understand what the architect did was really try to move it to where it would be conforming, but I'm asking if we could consider just leaving it where it is today, and just kind of leave it there. And I think it would be better for both of us.
Should I answer that question? I need to confer with my client to see if that would be acceptable to them.
I don't, yeah, I think that would be the first step, right?
Yeah.
If the board wants to, I mean, see if that's either, right?
Shall I orally confer with them?
If they're willing to do, and then we can, it's going to help.
Yeah. The first question is, is it feasible at all?
Of course, it would be feasible.
Then why don't you talk with your client?
So should we talk privately or in front of you?
Take a second. You can just turn off their mics for a minute if you want. Privacy.
Thank you. We can move them over to the front yard on Glen Boulevard, if that is what the board would like and the neighbor would like.
Is your concern noise, visual?
Oh, it's just noise. Maybe visual, too. I mean, I think where they have it today, it's kind of hidden with shrubs, and it kind of, you don't even notice it. So it's, I think it's-
It becomes on the streets like, you know, the ordinance says, not on the front.
Yeah, but it's kind of on the, it's this weird lot shape, so it's kind of, yeah, so it's kind of behind, like, there are bushes today, so it's kind of hidden from the street. And, yeah, so there's noise and visual as well. So I think keeping it where it is, it eliminates both those issues simultaneously.
Right, but if he leaves them where it is, it's going to be in their driveway.
No, we would put it just outside the new proposed driveway on the side of the house, and we could screen it with some landscaping there. There's plenty of space to put some shrubs there. So you wouldn't see it from the street, and it could still have the required area around it, so it will function properly and can be serviced. So it's a possible solution, other than the fact it's nonconforming.
Right, but that spot is still where they are now.
It's very close to where it is now, but-
It's in the proposed driveway.
It's already in the driveway.
I would not put it there. I would put it to the, looking from Glen Boulevard, I would put it to the right of the driveway.
Right, so basically even closer to the street than it is now.
Yes, yes, it would be.
But if the units stay where they are, they could be camouflaged with shrubbery or some type of-
Well, there's only one unit right now. We're proposing two units, and-
But where the, okay, where the proposed ones are now, which you're objecting to, they could be camouflaged with shrubbery or a fence or something.
Right, which would also, which would attenuate the noise.
Right.
Yes.
Absorb the noise. They would not be exposed.
Well, okay, yes, but they don't, it's compliant. Right. AC units are compliant, so-
Correct.
Any screen, I mean, unless it's a requirement of the ordinance to screen AC, okay, if it's not, so then whilst they're asking for a variance, they're not asking for variance for that. So you'd have, if you want, if the discussion is to screen where you're proposing them, you'd have to ask the applicant if they're willing to do that, because that's compliance. So they can move them if they want to without being here, that aspect of the application, right? So I just want to leave that.
Right. I understand why they put it where they want, where the plans are, because that would be in compliance. So I'm just requesting if we can kind of leave them where they are and give them a variance.
The board is discussing that option versus asking if, instead of screening them where they're in a new location on that side versus moving them and potentially asking if the applicant will be willing, which it sounds like there's not necessarily enough position to that, but that if they would, if they could relocate them and screen them so that they wouldn't be bothersome to you.
And I think on the plan, they're proposed, I think it would be better for both of us to kind of leave them where they are, because I think on that side, on the new side, it would be by our bedrooms, our dining rooms, our kitchens, and that kind of thing. But if we gave them the variance to kind of keep them where they are, it would be out of the way for both of us. Does that make sense? I hope I didn't confuse you. I hope I didn't confuse the board. But I guess what I'm just requesting is, if we can leave them where they are today, I think that would require variance, but it would be better for both homes.
We can screen them in the proposed location with a fence or landscaping that will help control the sound that radiates from them. Again, it'd be a fence that we would have to have at least 12 inches away, probably 18 inches away from the location. So it's possible, and even that fence would still be within the six-foot buffer that is the AC unit buffer you have from a side yard. So that's another possible way to deal with it in the location that it is currently in. Another thing to consider is, if we do shift them to the street side, then we have your refrigerant lines that are going to travel up in a liter on that side of the exposed house from the street, which is something I try to avoid. You want to conceal these utilities as best as you can, because the house just looks better.
It sounds like we've got like three options on the table there. That's not going to get us anywhere.
Okay.
We've got to have one that's accepted and can be proposed, and the board doesn't necessarily pick A, B, or C here, so.
Well, we'd like to keep them where they are, and we offer to put screening around them to help with the sound.
Keep them where they are proposed?
Where they are proposed, where they are proposed. And we'll put a fence around them at the height we're allowed to put, which is probably six feet.
Four.
Four feet?
Four feet.
Bushes would probably be more effective.
Bushes would be better.
Like an arborvitae?
Better with the sound, yes. We could put arborvitae around there. Is there a limit to how close those arborvitae can be to the property line?
No. We recommend planting them enough that when they grow, they're not encroaching-
Yes. Well, that would be a wonderful solution, that I think my clients would be happy with.
Do you have, that would give you some sense of screen, that would screen them, this would give you some protection?
Yeah, I think what we're, I think what we're all saying here is that we would both prefer for the AC units to stay where they are today, but if that requires a variance from the board-
That's, I don't think that's what you're both saying. I think that's correct.
No, we made a decision.
Oh, I see.
And our decision is, we would request that they go where we're proposing them, and we're going to provide a landscaping screen that is going to help absorb the sound to protect the neighbor from being disturbed by the units.
Right. That's the proposal on the table right now.
Okay.
You can, you're free to comment about that further, and you can certainly give your opinion about the application, so.
Yeah, like, I gave you my concerns. I think this is a great project. I think it would be a nice thing for the neighborhood. I think their plans are tasteful, and I think the home hasn't been updated in a year, so it's good to see that they're doing these improvements. So.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just for your own information, the amount of property between your property line and the house is almost 12 feet, and we've had similar situations at a lot lesser number.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
So I'm sensing the board is happy with that as a proposal in the originally proposed position with screening around it in terms of shrubbery, whether it's arborvitae or something else. Okay. Any other questions from the audience?
Comments?
Comments, questions? Comments, questions? Okay. Nothing else from the board? Anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
For approval of Block 62, Lot 9, 71 Greenway Road, as proposed.
With, with what? With the condition that the AC units be screened?
That the AC units be screened.
One second. Was that Bill? Janet? Sorry.
It's okay.
Janet? You're out.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaneler?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Boren?
Yes. Seven to zero, you win.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
The Mets should do so good.
Thank you very much.
Okay. 718 Harris Town Road. Block 158, Lot 16.01.
Oh, that's that.
Yeah. Want me to like, please hand them out now or wait till they're testimony? Is that okay? So Bruce can't be here, but he made some things that they might explain that triangular corner.
Should I ask the attorney?
Yes.
That's right. No, they've got to present, they've got to present. And if they don't present it, they, they don't present it, they get rejected.
You can hear them out now.
Someone's going to testify now?
Yes.
Thank you.
You done?
Nope.
Good evening. Richard Kapner, for the record, K-A-P-N-E-R. I am the attorney for the applicant and property owner, 151 Greenway LLC. The property at issue, Block 158, Lot 16.01, was created by subdivision by the planning board November of '22. That was a Zoom meeting, by the way, that lasted until 11:30 in the evening, because there was a lot of detail involved. And unfortunately, one small part of that has fallen through, which is the reason for this application is eaten. I only have two witnesses. With me is Carmela Leoni. She is the principal of 151 Greenway LLC, and behind me is Peter Steck, the planner, and both of these individuals also testified before the planning board at the subdivision. Housekeeping for Ms. Jeffrey. If we could, mark the application A1, please, and the proof of notice and publication as A2. It's already been submitted. Ms. Jeffrey has seen the publication, and I'm sure the board is looking now at the application and its components. Without further ado, if we can swear in Ms. Leoni, please.
Hi. Can you set your name and address for the record? Carmela Leoni, 137 Orchard Street, Elmo Park, New Jersey. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. It's Carmela? Thank you. C-I-R-M-E-L-L-A.
Ms. Leoni, you are the managing member and principal of 151 Greenway LLC?
Yes.
And as the owner of the property at 718 Harris Town Road in Glen Rock?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And at a point in time, this property, this house, was renovated and slightly expanded, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And as part of that, a foundation work was done on the one side of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And was a contractor hired for purposes of the foundation work?
Yeah.
And was the contractor provided a copy of the approved building plan?
Yes, yeah.
And did the contractor for the foundation indicate to you that they would follow and comply with those approved plans?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. At a point in time, did you learn that the foundation had been put in slightly, my word, into the side yard?
Didn't know until we got the final, the, went for the C.O. We didn't, we didn't know until then.
So your testimony is until you went for a certificate of occupancy?
We didn't know, we're not aware, because it wasn't done on purpose, and we were not, we didn't do it on purpose, because it was a mistake. And I'm sorry.
Is it, is it fair to say that until you made application for the certificate of occupancy and the municipality inspected, it was the first time you found out about the encroachment of the side yard?
Yeah.
And when was that, please?
It was, no, months ago, when Tracy called me up one day, and they said that's what's going on, and I be, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay. I have no further questions for this witness. Invite them from the board and the audience if they have any.
Okay. To the pub, to the public, do you have any questions of this witness and the testimony that's been given thus far? Done sailing, so go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Steck, please.
Mr. Steck, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Peter Steck, S-T-E-C-K, 80 Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I don't believe you've been here since I've been here, so.
We'll go through it briefly.
Thank you.
Mr. Steck, you are a licensed professional planner in the state of Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
And your license is current, correct?
Yes.
And you've had the occasion to testify before planning and zoning boards in New Jersey hundreds, if not thousands, of times, is that correct?
Hundreds of times.
And on all those times in which you have been offered as an expert, have you been accepted as such?
Yes.
And were you accepted as an expert professional planner in the subdivision application for this property in November of '22 before the Glen Rock Planning Board?
Yes.
I offer Mr. Steck as an expert professional planner.
And is his license in good stead?
It is.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Steck, you're familiar with the property and have visited it?
Yes.
Please tell us what you found.
Okay. I have an exhibit that might be helpful.
Pictorial is always good.
You're going to mark this as A1?
No, I would prefer this as A3.
Correct. And I apologize. You're going to mark this as A3?
And this is a four-page document, correct, Mr. Steck? That's correct.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Steck, you're here. We're going to mark this A3. It's got four subcomponents, so if you want to refer to any of the pages, we can call them A3, I don't know, A, B, C, and D, or little I, 2, and 3, but your choice.
What I'll first do is just describe what it is, and then I'll refer to it when I testify.
Sure.
So this is four pages prepared by me dated August 14, 2025. The first page shows the plot plan of the building. I'll spend some time on this, but in red is the offending part of the building as measured from the foundation. In the green is an area I put together, which would be permitted by right. That complies, and I, the point I'm going to eventually get to is that the area that encroaches is, is small. The permissible area that would not involve a variance is many times larger. The second page includes photographs that were taken by me on July 25 of this year. To the left is how you view the property from Harris Town Road. The front corner is more than compliant of the building, that's 20-foot side yard, but the offending part is, and I'm going to spend some time, in the worst-case scenario of interpretation, is about 1.4 feet. So that red line on the right shows the part of the building that is closer than 15.5 feet. It's a triangular section, so on the next page, P3 in the upper right, if you go back about eight feet from that corner, that's the very point of the triangle that, that is, offends the minimum side yard. On the right-hand side is a 2020 photograph that shows the original building and the fact that the driveway is, it was in this area, and, and we've switched it to the other side of the house. And on, I'll spend a little time on P4, which is a drone photograph also taken on July 25 of this year, where I've highlighted, I'll call it the worst-case scenario, that triangular red area. And again, because the roof eve extends further than that, your ordinance measures the setback from the foundation, and you're allowed up to three feet. So let me, with that identification, let me run through my testimony.
May I? May I just, I, we, I don't know, have you seen Mr. Riggs' plan?
I have.
Okay, I- And he, Mr. Steck will also address that. For the board's, for the record, Mr. Riggs has submitted a, what he called supplemental drawing and his interpretation of the ordinance, where he indicated, given the perpendicular nature, or if you will, the parallelogram, my word, of the lot, and his understanding that the side yard is measured in line with Harris Town Road. That is at the same angle, and that, on his plan, is where you see the 14.1-foot line on an angle. Both these documents are signed and sealed by Mr. Riggs. He could not be here. He's on a well-earned vacation, but I would still like to move those in as A4 for the drawing and A5 for the opinion as to zoning, because they're both signed and sealed by an expert who was recognized, a professional engineer and land surveyor and expert who was recognized by this board. Okay, fine. But Mr. Steck, I'm so sorry. Mr. Steck will address that one as well. Okay, I, my, and I just wasn't sure if Mr. Steck was aware of this area, his area of intrusion is over five and a half feet, and Mr. Riggs is less than half a foot. Just want to make sure- Make that introduction. Okay, just pointing that, I wasn't sure if he saw the document. Mr. Riggs has concluded, spoiler alert, that the intrusion is .4 feet, which is 3.84 inches, along a span of 2.3 feet, because it diminishes, it's a triangle. Mr. Steck, though, is taking, I think, a more, a different perspective, and he's going to give you why the variance is appropriate in the worst-case scenario. Mr. Steck?
Okay, so just to roll back in history, this was a subject of a subdivision that did involve some variances. It was a corner lot where the rear portion was subdivided off, and there were certain variances that were granted in connection with that subdivision. One of the variances involved this building on this corner lot, the new lot, and the variance that was granted was a side setback of 15.1 feet in lieu of the required 15.5 feet. Again, discovered late in the game was the fact that that corner to the foundation is only 14.1 feet as measured perpendicular to the side line. To jump the gun, Mr. Riggs has more experience appearing before you than I have, and he concentrated on the fact that the minimum side yard is a percentage of the lot width. And so when he measured the lot width, that's measured parallel to the front property line on Harris Town Road, and based on that percentage measurement, he detected if you measure the side setback in a line parallel to the front street, you came up, you come up with a very small encroachment. His calculation, based on that theory, was a triangle, approximately a right triangle, of .4 feet at its largest base, that's the rear line of the building, extending 2.3 feet along that sideline. I took a more extreme position. I said, forget that we already got a variance for 15.1 feet. What is the result if you look at the minimum side yard of 15.5 feet and measure it not parallel to the front street line, but perpendicular to the sideline? That results in an encroachment of a triangle, which is shown, I guess, on the first page, and it, it has a base of 1.4 feet, and it has a length or a height of that triangle of eight feet. Mr. Riggs' calculation showed that the encroachment was less than one square feet. I picked a worst-case scenario, the harshest way to approach this, and I calculate, as shown on the first page, that the offending part of the building is 5.6 square feet. That's relatively a small amount, and in comparison, as you see on the front page of my exhibit A3, in green, I calculated an area that could be built and be fully conforming, and that was approximately 19 square feet. And so that, that will go into one of my arguments about a C2 variance. I want to report, if you recall, that when the variance and the subdivision were granted, we did not need any impervious coverage variance. The, the building and the development is under the maximum impervious coverage. It's also under the maximum gross floor area, and that's whether you look at the entire lot up to the right-of-way line, or you even extract the easement along Harris Town Road. There was a road riding easement required by the county. Regardless of how you calculate, if you even exclude the right-of-way, we're still under in terms of the gross floor area and impervious coverage. So the focus here is on the intrusion into the side yard. The building otherwise is not too big, the impervious coverage is, does not exceed it. This property is irregular in shape, and it's not due to the fact that there was a subdivision. There is a little crook in the subdivision line, but the reason this property is not a rectangle is because Pine Land Road doesn't hit Harris Town Road in a right angle. And as you can see from the diagram on the first page of A3, this building, first of all, it's, it was an expansion of a 1917 building, both on the right and the left-hand sides, and it is, it's, it faces Harris Town Road, not perfectly aligned with it, but fairly close, and in fact, it matches the alignment of the adjacent house, and you can see that, I guess, on the last page. The adjacent house has a driveway, it has a house that, again, its front facade is aligned with our front facade, it has a garage in back and a pool, and so it, it makes sense the way the applicant shifted the building to make it consistent with the pattern- with the pattern of the adjacent building. That building to the east is, in my opinion, the one resident property owner that would be offended by this intrusion into the side yard. There is, in my opinion, potentially two justifications. I think there is a C1 practical difficulties argument due to the irregular shape of the property. Again, when the public views this from Harris Town Road, the northeast corner of the property is about 20 feet from the side property line. So, there is more than the minimum setback there. And then the intrusion in the rear is a relatively small amount. Again, if I pick the most extreme case, we're talking about 1.41 feet. Mr. Riggs calculates it as less than one foot in his experience of interpreting the side setback. I think that this could be viewed just based on that factor. But I think, in my mind, a equally potent justification is a C2, where the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. And what are the benefits of this? As shown on the first page, if the applicant was in compliance with the setback of 15.5 feet, again, the worst-case scenario, the applicant could have built substantially more building that would affect the adjacent property owner. And so, one issue is, the amount of encroachment is small. It is substantially less than could be built in a fully conforming way. Second observation is, and I think this is best seen on the last page, is that this encroachment is to the rear of the abutting house. So it is, it obviously doesn't have any effect. The shadow pattern is to the north. It doesn't crowd the adjacent lot. The adjacent lot has a driveway there. Shadow pattern is to the north. It clearly doesn't affect any of their solar panels. So, in my opinion, there is no substantial detriment to that surrounding property. I'll note another thing. If you look on the third page of my Exhibit A3, on the left-hand side, again, that part of the building was a paved driveway. So obviously, just by taking the driveway away, putting it on the other side of the property, and putting it in grass, it's clearly a superior design from the point of view of the neighbor next door. You'll also note that on the offending side of the building, and again, this is the worst-case scenario, about, you know, 1.4 by eight-feet triangular, the downstairs doesn't have any windows. And the upstairs has very high windows, because that's the bathroom area, so that there's automatic privacy there. So even the design of that house happens to, in my opinion, protect the privacy of that little triangle that affects, in my opinion, the only property owner that is of concern, or should be of concern. And that's, as you face the property, that's the property owner to the left. So, I think there is a C2, let me start back. I think there's a C1 practical difficulties variance because the property is irregular in shape. And for most of the wall of this sidewall of the building, it more than conforms with the minimum setback. I think there are equally strong, or possibly stronger, arguments based on the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. This house has its facade aligned with the adjacent property. We went from a driveway to a grass area. The intrusion is relatively small. If you adopt Bruce Riggs' interpretation, it is, you know, less than a square foot. If you adopt my worst-case scenario, it's 5.6 square feet in terms of its footprint. But this is clearly a better design. And I think it is more respectful of the abutting property owner, who would be the most offended by it. And it is imperceptible when viewed from the street, because the front corner of the property has a setback of approximately 20 feet, which is wider than the 15.5-foot minimum. Your master plan had, in reexamination report, had concerns about houses that were too large in terms of the floor area. That's not the case here. This house is undersized in gross floor area. It's undersized in impervious coverage. And that's even if you eliminate the easement for road widening purposes. So, the classic concerns are light air and open space and privacy. And in my opinion, there is no measurable detriment here. But I think that approving this as it exists today offers substantial public benefits that substantially outweigh any detriments.
One question, and thank you for all that. You mentioned the word imperceptible. On page two of your A3, on the left is the streetscape. And below your arrow pointing to the rear offending corner is a white fence.
Yes.
That is on the subject property, correct?
That is correct.
So, anyone walking on the sidewalk or driving by and looking at this property, and with that fence there, is the encroachment visible to anyone?
Well, it's technically visible above the fence. But the answer is, from that distance, no one would perceive that, again, worst-case scenario, 1.4 feet. No one would perceive that that offends the standard of the ordinance.
I have no further questions of this witness, and invite them from the board. And if none, from the audience, please.
Okay. Questions from this side?
Was the, the plan for the house before it was built? Because you, the testimony we were given from the planning board says 15 and a half feet as well, or 15.1?
The requirement was 15.5, and the variance that was granted was 15.1 feet.
Right. So, that is, in my experience, always measured perpendicular to the line.
And that, I'm-
Right. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to find out is, did the plot plan show 15.1, and it was built at 14.1?
The plot plan showed 15.1, and it was recertified after the fact of 14.1.
So, I'm not, now, I'm not looking to blame anybody. I'm trying to figure out how it got a foot closer to the line.
I wasn't there.
I know, neither was I. No, I, I just, I'm just, you know, it's, it's a mistake.
It is. The best way to clarify it is a mistake. And as I understand it, you know, you, you don't give credit for mistakes.
Right.
But you don't punish someone automatically as a mistake. You, and that's why I, I looked at this almost as if it was a blank vacant piece of property. Because I picked, in my line here, not 15.1 foot was the variance. I went to the most extreme, assuming nothing's on the property.
Right. But your 15.5 is measured perpendicular to the line, as opposed to-
That's how I measured it, because-
As opposed to, you set the corner parallel with the road, and then figure out what the perpendicular distance is.
That's the worst-case scenario, and I, I've, that's-
And, again, this is not the first time something like this has come to us. We've had several buildings, at least one other in my, my time here, two stories over the setback line. And while I don't think it's a, anything's intentional, I was just trying to figure out how it happened.
I wasn't there, and I-
You, you, you can't answer the question.
I understand that it was a Mason's error in setting the foundation.
Yeah, well-
But I, again, that's-
Yeah, that goes, well, never mind. You don't know is all I need to know.
And again, I, I'm justifying this as if it was a vacant piece of property.
Right. And if it was a vacant piece of property, we would probably say no. Because there's no, there's no hardship to put the house-
There is a hardship because of the shape of the property, in my opinion.
Right. But there's, for, for one foot, I don't, I personally don't feel that's, you know, you can, you can lose the .45 square feet or 5.6.
Well, again, I, as I testified, I think there are significant public benefits to the way this turned out. And you're, unfortunately, you're not looking at the plan. You're looking at the real deal now.
Right.
So, but again, if you look at the fact that the driveway was removed, that most of the sideline gives the neighbor more than the minimum, that it's a relatively small square footage, and that the neighbor's property, the offending portion is behind the neighbor's house, and you look at the window pattern on this property, I think that the, any detriments are insubstantial.
Correct. I, I think so, too. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how it ended up exa, almost exactly one foot closer to the sideline. But we don't know. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the challenge is that even though it's built, we kind of have to look at it as though it's not built.
No, you can't, you can't, I think it's both ways. You can't punish us, and you can't reward us for the mistake.
Right. I mean, I think, yeah, it was a mistake. But the property could handle this without having come, come to this board. The foot could have been handled.
Any other comments? Are you okay to end this line?
Bruce, I just have one question, maybe Tracy. I mean, we were talking about two standards here. One was your measurement basis, and one was Bruce's. What, what is it, what is the standard based on the, based on the ordinance, the town ordinance?
As per Bruce's letter that he supplied, there are two different interpretations of whether it's parallel to the street, which he referred to as the Harris Town, or perpendicular to Pineland. So, currently, our ordinance can be interpreted either way. That's why they gave you minimum request for variance and what the maximum could be.
So when the town reviews it, which one do they use?
Whichever one's submitted at this point. They're not wrong either way.
Because they got a-
Right now, the ordinance needs to be corrected.
Because they got a variance, it doesn't, it's kind of a moot point for that. What you would typically do is figure it out parallel to Harris Town Road, and then show it perpendicular to the sideline.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just mentioning it because I want to be sure we know what variance it is that we're, that we're-
Right. We have the testimony from the planning board, and it says, specifically says they're asking for this, and they're getting, they're getting the 15.1, but it does give you the other number.
Okay. Does the public have any questions of this witness? Seeing none, does the public have any comments on this application? Seeing none. Okay. Does the board have any further questions? Do you have any summary for us?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses, and I don't think I can make a better summary than Mr. Steck. And I would request that the board make a motion to approve this variance. And I don't know whether it should be considered the .4-
.45.
Or the 1.4, except if you move to grant the variance, I think it's going to encompass both. Because if you do 1.4, it encompasses .4. And to Mr. Mitchell, if both ways of measuring are appropriate in the ordinance, I think one subsumes the other.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I get your point. I mean, I'm looking at the variance, and it's a foot. It looks like the area that really is a violation is very small, if over the whole side of the house. I think I would have a much bigger issue, because a foot over 14 feet is 7%. That's, to me, is more than an error.
I get the visual, the green versus the red.
Right. I-
Thank you.
I get it. So, and the planner's testimony really focused on the measurement of, of the real violation. It's not the whole side of the house. And that's a big factor here. I, I get it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on this matter?
Okay, I'll make a motion then that the application for 718 Harris Town Road-
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and it's more, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Schineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Tewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You're out of your hair. By the way, the question was, how did this happen? I was always told that success is many parents and failure is an origin. I love that.
Good saying.
Oh, could I quote that one?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. The board is gonna take a five-minute biological break, and we'll be back.
Members, please turn off your mics.
Yours will be recorded. I mean, see, you have a special mention. How's your hands?
Good. I played golf last weekend. First of all, I hit ball on Friday. I was really sore Saturday. But my ribs were sore, my hands were sore. The rest of my body. And then we played nine on, on Sunday. And, I mean, with the exception of just being out of practice and playing poorly, I had no pain whatsoever.
Great.
So, yeah, I mean, I'll take that. And I've been on planes for, you know, eight, 10, 12 hours, no issues.
Nice. So it works.
Hi, Zima, how are you? Eaton Place is next on the list. Is that you? You're next.
No, that's good.
I said the same thing. Then you go look up the site. At least you get some better perspective. I didn't.
So that's why we like, I always love doing small.
It's like jacket on, jacket on, jacket on.
My coworkers like. That's a very professional, he's good. And she's like, come on, come on.
Do you want to what?
Get to forty-four Deborah. My coworkers deal with it all day with me.
How many is in your office?
Nicole's full time and Kara's full time.
Oh.
And then the building inspectors, they're in mourning and then he's out, but basically it took the three of us in there. Yeah.
Is this Roxon?
Ziamara, that one.
This is my child. How proud I must be, as they say. You ever see the movie Parenthood?
Yeah.
Years ago, and somebody goes, somebody, one of the little kids, like, running into the wall and he goes.
For Ziamara, the floor is yours.
Members, please turn on your mics. We're back on recording.
The floor is yours.
Well, first I.
Well, you can swear them in now.
I'm going to.
Okay, can you all state your name and address for the record, please?
Rinco Senha, 24 Eaton Place, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Rajiv Senha, 24 Eaton Place, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Ziamara Paredes, 24 Rock Road, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Can you all raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We're in front of the board tonight for an addition of a front porch that requires a front side setback variance. This is, this addition is going to be for a house that is already non-conforming to the side front setback. It's a corner property where the front setback, the main front setback, is on Eaton. The 50 feet is required. And on the Boulevard, that is the side front setback where the 37.5 feet is required, and the existing house is at 25 feet. We're proposing a porch that will be aligning with the front of the house that is at 25 feet. It won't go any further. It will be aligning with that. So the project has two hardships. The one hardship is that it's a corner property. So in a corner property, two front yards are required. If this was an interior property, then for the corner property, the required setbacks are 50 feet, the main, and 37.5 the side front. Whereas if this was an interior property, the required side setbacks would be nine feet. So nine feet to 37.5 is a big difference. So that's why it's a hardship, having a corner property. And the second hardship is that the house is already non-conforming to that side front setback. So this house is a Tudor. Tudors are known for having high volumes, a steep pitch roof that makes it even higher. And so it has a U shape. And that's what I'm including here in this diagram, a U shape. And we are proposing this front porch filling that open space that is in between facing Boulevard. So I have a few photos showing. This is the aerial photo that was taken from Google Earth. That is the aerial photo showing the location of the house. And as a reference, I have some photos that show, for instance, this central photo is showing how this space is. It's surrounded by these tall volumes that is characteristic of Tudor homes. So it's a two and a half story high in all sides. This is a kind of a hard, dark space, not very inviting. And what we are aiming to is having, adding a porch that would make a scale more in proportion, human scale, and create an outdoor space that can be enjoyed by the family. So once we have the roof, the proposed roof here for the porch, it will be an open porch. It would be more, like I said, better proportions. The, adding the porch, what we're doing in addition to having better proportions, are creating an outdoor space. We're going to be improving the, or enhancing the curb appeal of this house as well as contributing to the streetscape in the neighborhood. We are also, the design of the columns for this porch would be continuing. We provided a photo montage of how the porch would be looking. This is the before, this will be the after. So if you notice, the porch, there is a side porch on the left. And what we're proposing is that this porch will follow the style and the same type of columns that the porch has on the left. So it would be integrated to this. It would be an extension of the design of the house that it would be perceived as if this porch was always there. It was part of the original design. Because this is a U shape and the addition will be in the center, it will not impact the neighbors. Because if you're coming from Rock Roll, driving through Boulevard, you won't even see this addition, the new porch. And the same thing, coming from Hawthorne and Boulevard, you won't perceive that. So this is, the intent is that to really, that the front of the house reads as something cohesive and seamless. This addition to be seamless to the design of the house. So in summary, we have two hardships, the corner property and the non-conformity to the side front of the house. And we will be enhancing the curb appeal and therefore the streetscape of the neighborhood. It will not impair, but will support the intent of the ordinance when improving the aesthetics of the house in the neighborhood. And the benefits of the deviation will substantially outweigh the detriment, if any. So I thank you very much. I respectfully will ask you to consider approving this variance. And I'm ready for the board to any questions you may have.
Just mark the second page.
Second page?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
A1.
Thank you, A1.
I think we have your first page, so you want to just.
Yeah.
So we're going to mark. Oh, that's the photo.
This one, yeah.
The photo, it's photos and Google Earth sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I don't know if we should, may want to address the existing air conditioner in the front yard, the side front yard. Just if they go to replace it, and the variance is already in place, they don't have to come back here?
They're, well, we're not touching any of that.
I know you're not, but being it's there, okay, if sometime they have to go to replace it, then they have to go back and go to the board and everything because I'm just saying to include it as a.
Right, as in the package, I understand.
So if they go to replace it, they don't have to re-note this.
You don't have to, I understand, of course. Why don't we?
Also, you know, if they wanted to screen this in, I think that would make it fall under EGFR, correct?
Yes. Well, it is counted already.
Right, okay, so that's not.
And that's one thing I wanted to mention, that we are, that the only variance we were asking was for the setback, but we comply with all the other requirements.
A porch is great, a screened-in porch is even better, so.
That's front yard, not from the side yard. It's front side yard. So would your client like to request a front side yard variance for their air conditioning unit?
For the air conditioning unit.
It's not by distance, though. It's just that.
It's not by distance, it's just that it's in the front yard.
That is in the front, that is in the side front yard.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Questions down this side? Nothing right now. Any more down this side? Okay. Are there questions of this witness from the audience? None showing? Okay. Are there any comments on this application from the audience? None for us showing, okay? Anything from the board? Any additional comments before I be so bold as to call for a motion? Good. Okay. Can I have a motion on this application, please? I move that block 91, lot 15, 24 Eaton Place be accepted as proposed.
I'll second.
That's a second?
With the additional variance?
Along with the air conditioning.
Along with the allowance for the air conditioning?
Who is the second? Sorry.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Schineller?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuit?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ziamara, I'll take the, it doesn't have to be now. You can email it or, sure.
Ziamara, do you want the copies? Ziamara, do you want the copy?
Okay. Once the table's clear, it's 44 Beverly Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Whenever you're ready.
If you could turn on your mics, please?
Thank you.
Want to swear them in now? Okay.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Can I ask you to put it next to you, so it goes like this? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Robert L. Garibaldi Jr. On behalf of the applicants, we are here for an application for variance on EGFR. I think you've had quite a few of those this evening. We are a application that is quite similar to a application that the board heard earlier this year and by resolution in May 8th granted a variation for very similar factual circumstances that my client will address and will also then be addressed by our expert. And we hope that the outcome could be the same, but it's quite, quite, quite similar. And I did mention to the board that evening that a second application would be forthcoming because of the same events dealing with the builders. So with that being said, my client would like to make an opening comment as to some of the historical information of how we got to this situation. And then I'll have the expert address the EGFR issues. And we'll proceed accordingly.
Do you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Nicole Kaminsky, K-A-M-I-N-S-K-Y, 44 Beverly Road.
Just your testifying?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Kaminsky. My husband, Corey, and I bought the home at 44 Beverly Road in November of 2023, and we moved to the neighborhood in May of 2024. We moved from Manhattan. We spent months visiting various Bergen County towns until ultimately deciding on Glen Rock. We were drawn to the small-town feel, how nice everyone we encountered throughout the process was, and the schools we planned to send our children to. We were first-time home buyers and were guided through the process, sorry. We were guided through the process by a fellow Glen Rock resident, our mutual real estate broker. The same broker represented both buyer and seller. We toured other homes that looked just like ours with friendly and welcoming families residing in them. And as our house was being built, our excitement to join the community only grew. I know our story is just one of many that the board has recently reviewed, and though it may not be unique to you, it is unique for us. We were deceived by the people that we trusted and an experience, sorry, just had a baby, so a little emotional. An experience that was supposed to be happy and. and exciting for us has been filled with uncertainty, anxiety, financial burden, and so much stress. It has felt never-ending, going on for longer than we could have ever imagined. I have gotten pregnant and had a baby who's now four months old, all since receiving the violation notice weeks after we moved in. No one wants this situation resolved more than we do. Before moving here, I didn't know what EGFR was, and I really wish that I still didn't. The floor plans that we received, when going into contract on our home, included the walk-in closet we viewed at other homes. In fact, we cared so deeply about the closet and the finishes that we'd seen at the other home we toured, we specifically had our contract altered to include that all finishes will be similar to X. I won't mention the name of the house here, but it is in our contract. It turns out that the floor plans submitted to the town by the builder for our home did not match the ones that we had received, something we didn't learn until July of 2024. Everything was going as expected throughout the process until March 24th, 2024, approximately one month before we closed on our house. We were doing a routine site visit, and we noticed that a wall had been framed, cutting off a portion of the closet. We reached out to the builder to ask what was going on, and we were informed over the phone that they needed to finish the closet after closing. This made us nervous, but since we were weeks away from closing, had already given up the lease on our apartment, and enrolled our son in a local school, we felt we had no choice but to trust the broker and the builder, who knew more than we did, and move forward. Our lawyer had the builder put something in writing, saying they would build out the closet as promised, which the builder did do shortly after we moved in. But just weeks after we had moved in and the closet construction was complete, we received a visit from Tracy, who delivered violation notices. No one from the board or the town even entered our home. It seemed like everyone knew all along this was going to happen, but no one alerted us about it prior to closing, when we moved in, or even during the construction. Everyone just waited for it to be done and then to issue us violations. Apparently, this was a pattern of behavior that the town had been witnessing, and we soon learned the very hard way that we were just one of many people impacted by this. After the violations were issued and we retained Mr. Garibaldi as our lawyer, we were instructed to have Mr. Scott Bella come and verify the EGFR calculations. He visited our home on November 4th, 2024, and it is then that we learned that our house was over the square footage allowed by more than just our closet. The EGFR calculations provided by the builder's architect were incorrect from the very start. Just add this to the list of things that we were blindsided by. I won't go on and on with all the details. I know that you have heard many of them before, but please know that all we ever wanted was to buy a house, raise our family in it, and be a part of a community. I pride myself on being a rule follower. I would never have entered this situation knowingly. It may sound very silly, but this has weighed on us and put a really big damper on something that should have been joyous. Granting this variance will allow us to continue living happily in our house, a house that we've worked really hard to make a home. Rejecting it will not benefit anyone in the community, as our house will remain the same from the outside. Once again, we will be the ones penalized for the actions of others, others who continue to be able to work and to build in our town. We love our home, the friends and the neighbors we've been lucky to meet over the past year, and we hope to continue to be upstanding members of the community in the future. Thank you for your time.
Just to be clear for the board, when you indicated that the contract itself had multiple provisions related to the construction of the master bedroom closet, did that include the addendum to the contract, the plans that were appended to the contract, which showed that a master bedroom was going to go in? So, it was negotiated from the start that this is going in, this was never intended to be constructed post-closing?
No, never. It was always listed as part of the contract from the very start.
Right. And your expectation was, is that when the house was built and you received the CO and you were closing, that you would move into a home that was completely done?
Yes.
So, it caught you by surprise a month prior to that, that they were going to delay it, but you've indicated that both the contractor, as well as the agent who served both sides of the transaction, indicated, and I think the words you had indicated to me were, is that this was commonplace for closings in town involving specifically this builder, that this work was done post-closing?
Yes, that's correct.
And that you had also asked your attorney, because the broker had performed a walkthrough, final walkthrough inspection on this new construction on your behalf, because you both lived in New York at that point in time. And that was not confirmed in any type of a punch list that the work would be done, but you had your attorney confirm it in an email, it was affirmed by the builder, that this again was going to be done after the closing. And no revmev mention was ever referenced in your conversations, emails, or whatever, with your attorney, or with the broker, or the builder of the word and the term EGFR?
No, I've never heard EGFR.
That being a problem?
No, that's correct. I never heard the term EGFR before.
All right. And you were never asked to sign any document in advance of closing, acknowledging that this was being done, other than you had to encourage your attorney to do so?
Yes. The only documentation was just that they said they were going to complete the closet.
All right. And that you were caught basically by surprise when Tracy was doing her job and then issuing violations for the violation, and here we sit.
Correct.
I have no further questions. If the board has some, please feel free.
I would just like to say that when this pattern came up, it hasn't been, however long it's been going on, I only think that Tracy's been aware of it for less, maybe less than a year. It was, it happened in two situations, and then it sounds like, wait a second, this guy's built a bunch of houses in town, and that's when they started looking. It's, you know, you trust the professionals to do what you hired to do. You're going to build me a house, it's going to conform, I'm going to pay you a bunch of money, and everybody goes their way. Everybody's happy. So, it's, I just don't want you to think that the town kind of turned their head for all these years, and then, you know, it just became news to us. And, you know, you're the third, if not the fourth, that we've had so far. And I, unfortunately, we, the board, can't do anything. But there are remedies at the state level. That's all I can say. But, you know, I'm sure Mr. Garibaldi would know how to proceed that way, so.
Bob, the one question I asked you the last time, it's the same question still hangs out there. What happened with the lawyer for the applicants here? And that they're getting a notice that a job is not going to be finished until after they get a C of O. It really boggles the mind that a lawyer was in the middle of this.
It's new construction. It's uncommon to have a portion of a home that easily can be constructed during the course of the normal construction process. It's not abnormal to have post-closing work to be done on new construction, because a builder's anxious to go to the next transaction. Ergo, there are punch lists that you put together. But this didn't even find its way into a punch list.
Well, it's also, a punch list doesn't normally say, please build the closet. I mean, you know, you might say the trim on the door of the closet is missing. That would be expected.
It's, it was a much larger aspect of this. And, but again, these were a couple buying their first home, had very competent local counsel, and followed the work to be done. And I, you know, I can't speak of why, we know now why the builder could not do that, because it was a misrepresentation to the borough, as well as to my clients, as to the purpose behind that. And it seems to have been quite a repetitive thing, thing being done. But they closed, they relied upon it, they had a broker who was repeating the same thing, who owns a house in town. They visited models of homes that had what they had expected to build, they had a contract with a walk-in closet, identical to the same plans that were submitted by the same architect to the borough. Only thing that was missing was that one little box that said walk-in closet in the master bedroom on what was approved by the borough, and it was pure misrepresentation, because theirs was a different document for the page two floor. So, you know, I don't think any attorney is going to be reviewing architectural plans. It's just not that thorough at that level, because as the borough relies on the professionals, you know, they'll also, the attorney will rely on something that seemingly is not so completely out of the norm. It's a master bedroom, and it could be done in a relatively short time. So, I don't know how it was sold to one attorney to the other, but all my clients know is that they felt uncomfortable by not even having anything in writing from the builder, and then got so and got an affirmation, and I've seen that. But other than that, that's it. I agree with you. Maybe the flag should have gone up, but it didn't.
Yeah.
Right. And this isn't just the closet. This is also like a 500-square-foot, again, error.
In the construction of the home.
By the architect.
Oh, that's, yeah. I mean, the house was built larger than it should.
Right. Even without the closet, it didn't, it wouldn't have conformed.
They're here no matter what.
Right. So, you got gross, either gross negligence or gross misrepresentation.
Yes.
But, you know, unfortunately.
We explore the options, you know, to see for future enforcement, but for the property owner themselves, it's a highly, it's a litigious environment to go through, it's a very expensive process to go through. And the benefit that they ultimately will receive is, you know, to get him to stop, stop, and I'm sure he, I hope he has stopped doing what he's doing. But it's quite unfortunate, but it's, you know, it's difficult. And our relief, unfortunately, for the members of the board, is here. Any questions for?
You know, it's just as Thomas indicated, this is an incredibly difficult situation for the board as well, because there's just no way we'd improve 150-square-foot variance for EGFR, you know, 12 months ago. It just didn't happen in my 10 years on the board. So, until recently.
Right.
All right.
This is an identical situation.
Yeah.
And I'm agreeing. It's not, everybody's jumping on the bandwagon because of it. These things happen at the same time, we just didn't, weren't able to get the applications in together. But it is identical, and it's a similar story. It's very unfortunate, but the house, unlike the other one, they hadn't closed yet. So, their ability to mitigate their damage and expenses that they've incurred, and then to put them in a position, they've got three years of litigation to go through to try to recoup from this. And it's, I've been through residential litigation, and it's not beneficial for either side, quite candidly. And everybody comes in charging for the ability to have their day in court, and by the time they get there, they've spent more money than they could possibly imagine. And it's usually negotiated or mediated to the dislike of both sides. So, it's, you know, I applaud our judicial system, I'm proud of it, but it's a costly, time-consuming effort to get this one singular issue back. And, you know, and that's, I think it's certainly enough, all the factors that went into this, that as it was in May, it hopefully will receive a favorable look. It's, this is not going to happen, you have the gatekeepers for the zoning ordinances of the Borough of Glen Rock, and you do a great job doing it. This is one of those that you fiercely protect. The exception to this is the same as it was, and it's not going to come. It's only because of what a person did to deceive not only the borough, but property owners, and that's unfair and unfortunate. And the way it was done was so carefully scripted. And I guess it has worked, and it's something that we normally don't see. And it's not done until people spend their lifetime of savings to move into a town that they want to come into. And nobody from both sides did anything wrong. And that's unfortunate. And we're trying to reconcile a misrepresentation that was done to both, to grant something that normally you wouldn't. But it's, that's, it's a very special exception that will not, as I said the last time, repeat itself to this board. It shouldn't. And, you know, forewarned is forearmed, and that's what we have. It's shame on everybody else if it's allowed to happen, and I know this town won't.
Any questions of the board here?
Scott? Okay. That being said, I'd like to call Scott Bella.
Yeah, because I don't think anybody in the public's going to ask any questions.
Well, that also says something, because they notified all their neighbors, and that there's not a single neighbor here to either speak, to speak against it, let alone for it. That tells you something, that either the neighbors don't care, or they don't see it as an issue. That's what it appears to me, you know.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Bella. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Scott Bella, B.E.L.L.A., 65 Glen Avenue, Glen Rock. And do you swear the testimony that you're about to give us, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
Mr. Bella, at the request of the applicant, did you visit the subject property for the purposes of evaluating any variances required under the EGFR ordinances of the Borough of Glen Rock?
Yes. I was retained to go and verify the existing conditions, and I went out to the site and took my measurements, and came up with the numbers that we have before you.
And as part of your analysis, did you also review the, did you feel necessary to review the plans that were approved, site plans, final site plans, that were submitted by the builder as part of the construction process?
I did. I was able to see the plans that were approved, submitted, and the numbers are definitely off from the reality.
Okay. And as a result of your measurements and findings and review, you prepared a report, and we have submitted that to the borough?
Yes. So, we've drawn the floor plans, along with the calculations of the square footages of first floor and second floor. And as it relates to EGFR, we are, we do have an overage, which is, again, as discussed, more than the, just the closet. So, those numbers are basically, first floor is 2384, second floor total is 1887, for an overage of 796.46. 277 square foot of that is the closet.
Do you want to get into the positive and negative?
Sure, yeah.
Please.
If I just may take one minute, just to clarify that I was not the architect of record. I know the board understands that, but there's been rumors in the public, and I know this is being recorded, that I've been retained after the fact, or after the error has occurred, to come in and figure it all out, essentially. I just wanted to put that on the record, because when you hear one rumor, it's a scary thing, being in a small business. So, that being said, I would like to speak to the house itself. The house, as I think the board would agree, is a very well-designed house. The proportions on the house is such that it doesn't feel like it's overbuilt, in my opinion, in my professional opinion. There's a lot of roof lines that add curb appeal and character to this dwelling. And I think it's been brought up by the board that, you know, the neighbors are not necessarily here, in my opinion, because it is a very well-designed house and fits nicely within the neighborhood, and falls well within the context of the neighborhood with, you know, aesthetics in terms of similar roof lines, similar materials, residential materials and roof lines, and overall design just fits well within the neighborhood. I don't see any detriment for that reason, because I believe that it looks inconformant, even though it's not inconformant. And it is really not obtrusive, in my opinion. I think the house is, although large, larger than what is allowed proportionally, it doesn't appear that way in terms of the aesthetics of this building. So, I don't see any detriments in that regard, because aesthetically, it just works and fits well within, and it really doesn't stand out. The positive criteria is that it's a very well-designed building, and, you know, adds value to, I believe, the block. The positive criteria is that it's a very well-designed building and, you know, adds value to, I believe, the block and the town. It's, you know, it's, it's a nice, nice design, brings in, you know, taxes, obviously. But I don't see any detriments on this property.
I think that concludes his testimony.
Yes, I'm, yep.
Any questions on the board?
Aside from?
I got a text that they couldn't hear you, the TV people.
Aside from the walk-in closet, you'd still have to try to recoup 500, over 500 square feet.
Yes.
I'm looking at your plans, I don't see anywhere where you could recoup 500 square feet.
You, you would basically have to lose the, the master suite.
So you'd have to lose that whole master?
The, the closet, bedroom and a portion of the bathroom.
Right.
The other thing, Scott, just, you know, it's great for you to say that it fits in or it's a wonderful design, but beauty is in the eye of the beholders.
I agree, yep.
Not everyone agrees with that.
I, I agree, yeah. I, I think it's a nice building, everyone else, you know, has their own opinion, of course, yeah.
It's, it's becoming what houses are, being, how, how they're being rebuilt or tear downs in town.
Well, it, it depends on how big it has to become, that's all. That's what the issue is here. It's not the overall design, does it have more peaks or dormers or this? It's a question of how big are you going to make it?
Right. And it's a, that's.
There is a, there is a bet rate, but I think Scott, I'm not going to speak for Scott, but I think there's, part of how you can demonstrate the positive criteria speaks to aesthetic, aesthetics. So in terms of, and he acknowledged your point, but I'm saying, but I don't, I don't think the, the point can be not dis, I don't think the point should be disregarded, that those aspects, the architectural features, may, in certain people's opinions, add to an aesthetic appeal, which is a way to demonstrate positive criteria. So, yes, there is a question of.
Yeah, but I still disagree with you, because it, it just simply.
You can, I, I know you disagree with me.
She's just stating the law.
But I'm stating what the law is.
You can state it all night long, it doesn't matter.
But you can disagree that it's not satisfied, but you can't, I don't, I would hope that you don't disagree with me about what the law is. If you don't believe that someone satisfies it, I'm okay with, I'm all okay with that. But when I state what the law is, I, I hope that you agree as to what I'm stating. Because that's.
I'll accept that, yes.
Okay.
And as Tom pointed out, there are no neighbors here to object. Either yay or, you know, like, I don't like it or I like it, so it's like a moot point for the neighbors. And I'm not saying I like the idea of what this contractor is doing.
It's, it's also, the, the law in the Borough of Glen Rock is written by the Borough Council. And the people elected to the council write that law, representing the individuals, not one street in town or one half a street or anything else. So when you look at the houses, you have to consider what the council, in its wisdom, said the size of the house should be and the way it should be built. And when the council wants to change that and make all the houses in Glen Rock as big as this one or the other ones in question, it'll be a moot point. Because they will have represent, the people representing the borough on the council will make that decision and that goes.
And again, I'm not saying that you have to in any way grant this variance or not, that's up to you. But your job is to grant or, or review deviations from the ordinance. So that, so the council's job is to set the ordinance. Your job is to look at whether or not an applicant has put forth proofs to deviate from specific provisions of the ordinance. That's literally what your job is to do.
And that, that's well understood and that's why I'm making the points.
So you're not, your job is not to stick to the ordinance. It's to look, consider, consider requests whether or not.
When you start to rewrite the ordinance for the council, you're doing a different job.
Uh, I agree with that.
And that's why, that's my point, is we have a certain set of laws and we have to decide what we're going to do with them. This is, this is a no-win situation for the applicant or for the board. Absolutely no-win situation.
If you can't trust the professionals as, what they're submitting, then the town has, would have to like, put someone on retainer to have them verify every piece of paper that came in, which would then cost, because I, the town's not going to bear that burden. It's going to get passed on to the homeowner or the builder, which should have happened in this place, but, you know. You know, is, is misrepresentation, you know, a, a, not an excuse, but.
At the risk of, of getting my.
Is that a, a reason for a variance? You know, but, you know, there is, it's not covered, there's no criteria that says, you know, these people have been misrepresented and, you know, the, you know, you, you, you know, none of us wants to say, that's just too bad, you know, you should have been aware. When you're moving from an apartment in the city to a house anywhere, it's going to be, you know, you're going from three, maybe four rooms to five, six, 10. It's, it's, you're just going to be like, great, I don't have to, you know, I relied on this guy to give me a product and he didn't. So, but unfortunately, it's not up to us, we can't, that's not reason for a variance.
That's right.
Yeah, and as much as we want to punish the builder.
It's just not a question of punishing the builder, it's a question of what, what we're supposed to be doing for the town.
Right.
And, it's really what, let, let me, at, at great risk of chastisement here. We, we know that in two weeks, there's going to be consideration of what the law should look like and some people are going to wait out to see what that results in. Is there any point in?
I have no idea what that ordinance looks like.
No, neither do I, I don't have a clue. I just know they're looking and that there will be something in front of the planning board. So, that, is there any benefit to telling this applicant, why don't you wait and see what comes up and what that means?
Because, I, 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 I'm pretty sure that you're built according to the ordinance at the time.
Well, that's, that's fairly true.
Right, I mean, that's, well, your application stands by the ordinance when you fi, when you file. So, I mean, whether they could withdraw and refile.
Whether they change it or not, they can't, the retro, retro, it's not retroactive.
Without a decision, they could, they could withdraw and refile. They can't get a decision, I mean, well, yes, but they, if the ordinance changes, that's a changed circumstance, they could refile.
Right, but if the ordinance changes, it's only, it doesn't, it's not retroactive.
No, but they could refile. If the ordinance changed and that benefited them, they could refile, because that's changed circumstances. So the res judicata in theory would not apply. I mean, they would get past, I would imagine, get past res judicata, because that's a changed circumstance. All you need is something that's, something that's different, whether it's a circumstance that's different on your, on your plan or something that's changed, that would be a reason to get.
Right.
Or they wouldn't, their, their no would be less of a no or whatever, because the ordinance could change. But I just don't, I honestly have no.
Yeah, we don't know what's going on and we're.
This, this is just the, the planning board meeting, your, the work session you're referring to is an initial evaluation from the borough that hired a planner to work with the subcommittee of the planning board members. They are only at their initial, bringing it back to all of the planning board members. I don't know how much ping ponging.
And not for a consistency review, it hasn't been introduced, right?
No, 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 this is like a presentation of the thoughts. It's, it's the, maybe second step by now. That would have to be discussed if there's any changes before it's then sent of recommendations, if EGFOR should be changed or not to council, council can then request changes.
Yeah, it's not going to.
It could be six months, it could be five years for all I know. I don't, there's no, there's no timeframe. It's my mission to get it done, but I don't control how fast.
Mr. Gerbel, did you happen to know if the rest of the house conforms to all of the other bulk requirements?
I, I've, have, we've not done anything specifically to verify that, but based, just simply on the calculations done by our expert, that's, that's as best we can come back. But we believe, we believe so, we're, we're not aware of anything.
I mean, you're not here seeking any other variances, so then in theory, it would comply with all other setbacks, height, everything else complies.
Everything else seems to be in accordance with the plans that were approved by the, that were approved by the municipality.
Right, but, right, and, okay.
If I can also, just on, on Mr. Bourne's point, I, I, I understand how you're wrestling with this. And, and, and council did mention the, the phrase res judicata. But I, I'm also bringing forward with respect is, is the principle of stare decisis. This is a, an application that's three months hence, the exact same decision that was rendered by this board. And under that, that legal standard, the board is bound to enforce that same principles. You've made findings of fact as to the positives and negatives, which are identical to what's here. And that decision should also apply to this application. So that's, that's, I just want to be mindful from a legal point of view, that, that does have merit. I've been before other boards in other towns and, and I, I think it'd be hard pressed to take exactly the same arguments that were presented and affirm them and then three months later discard them as not being, having sufficient merit to stand by the, the, the application.
I, right, I do think the board is entitled to look at the parameters of this. I, I don't disagree from a legal perspective necessarily, but I do think the board is entitled to look at the, and evaluate whether there was testimony on the surrounding circumstances of each home and where each home was located and the particulars of each home and the particulars of each application.
Don't just, just, I don't, I, I don't, do not disagree with that, but it, but the analysis, really, with the other application, there was a letter that was signed affirming that the, the property owners would not add that. And again, it was a mis, a total misrepresentation of how they came about even to sign that, that letter. But that was a, a more affirmative thing that the board was wrestling with, yet still, still granted the, the application. This was pure, simple misrepresentation from the beginning, from like, when the contract was signed moving forward. And, and, and the, the remedy for this, if it's denied, is, is, is horrific to the, to the property owner. So, again, with, with that and then, which, which the count, the board has a right to do whatever they'd like to do, but where there's been some precedent on something that I, I think is, and I, I'm not speaking for the board, but I believe that the facts, contracts, writers, everything was the same, same builder, same architect, same everything. And, and same, same program to get this thing done. And then build a house that have, has a, basically the size of a master bedroom, that would have to be removed. I mean, it's egregious, what, what was done. And, and I, and I think for the, for the same argument that, that, that carried this back in May, it, it, it would, it should apply to, to, to this matter. I, I understand you're frustrated, you, you have a job to do.
We, we also are told continually on this board that one decision doesn't set precedent to the other.
Starre decisis, it does.
So you're arguing the opposite of that.
Oh, I.
I'm not the lawyer, so I can't say.
No, no, I, I, with all due respect, I, I believe that is the standing. And it's been argued in other municipalities and that's the law. That's, it's a, it's a decision made is a decision to be followed.
Well, if you want to, I can do, I mean, I'm not prepared to rule on whether or not I think this board should rule on stare decisis.
If you want it briefed, I'll be more than happy to do so.
That's up to you. If the board would like to take time, I can look at that issue, but I'm not prepared to like, give a legal opinion on stare decisis, which we, this board has really never addressed from, you know.
That's correct, we never have.
And I don't think I want to address that on the record at 10:00 PM for the first time.
Fine.
So if, if, if that is what is, the board is struggling with, if, then perhaps.
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that the board is struggling with that issue in particular or they're struggling with many other issues.
Well, it'll be an issue that, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, right, I don't know either, right.
It's a late hour decision.
So I'm happy to look into that as well and get back to the board. If you want to do the same, I'm, I'm happy to look into that and I may come to the same conclusion that you are in terms of legal principles, although we both agree that, that the particulars of each application are considered on their own. And I don't want this board to start looking at every other prior decision that they've ever made and be like, oh, well, now we have to do this. So I think that there has to be, there's got, there's some differentiation here that I believe that you're speaking of in terms of the particulars of this application and the, the carry-through of the same exact set of facts is what you're trying to argue, I believe.
Other, and the other one had a, an additional fact, which made it more egregious at that time. So you take that out and I just.
Right, you're not necessarily saying that this, each application does not stand on its own. You're arguing the fact that, that because there was the same set of facts, identical set of facts, that the board made a decision on that, that that should carry forward.
Correct.
Okay.
When, when this started, we, we are, we were assuming that the only EGFOR variance that we would need to have come back to this board, which would have been a very difficult one, would have been solely on the, on the master bedroom. And then to find out that the, that both of these homes were built, you know, significantly larger than what the plans were approved by the town and, 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 you know, it's, 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 it's a, it's a mess, it really is a mess.
I also think that there's factors, there are also planning factors and, and factual factors that, there was testimony here. There's, there was facts in, brought up about consistency with the neighborhood. That was an issue that was discussed last time. There was whether or not that fits, it fit the helm, fits in with the neighborhood at this time, whether the fact there, there are no objectors or homeowners, surrounding homeowners in the audience. Those, that's also a factor as to the negative criteria. So there are other factors besides stare decisis that also play into, even if that is a legal issue that you'd like us to address, we can address that, but there are other factors, certainly from a pure variance standpoint, by which this board can look at this application.
Let's put it this way, I'm not inclined at the moment to vote in favor of the variance. And I did vote the last time that Bob made, made that point. So I am probably the case in, in point specifically. So I think the research should be done.
Okay, I don't know, if it's going to come to a different conclusion than what we just came, came to, but I will, I don't think that we're, we're in any kind of real disagreement, but I will get you.
I don't know, what are, what are the other board members, I'm, I'm the one who's talking here.
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to come back and give you any kind of information and speak to Bob and listen to the report back.
Well, as, as we've been told since day one, each, each one is, is if it is on its own merit. Because if I knew, okay, I had to, you know, okay, so, we'll take this, this example here. If I knew that, you know, each one, you know, I had, had, I'd be staving each one of these. I'd be, I've had notes on each one, you know, I, I am thoroughly disgusted by what the architect did, by what the builder did. I, I, I'm a retired licensed lancer, right, okay? And one of the things is the regulations say that if I know of someone doing something wrong, I'm supposed to turn them into the state, okay? I don't know if we're being retired, I now don't have to. But, you know, seeing what it's done to these people, to the other two people, is just, it, it, you know, I don't normally stay awake at night over a lot of things. This stuff keeps me up at night, because this is complete and utter crap, that what they're doing to these people. So I, I, you know, to me, the DCA and the state board should be involved in figuring out what these guys are doing to these, these people. I'm going to use the word unsuspecting homeowners, because most first-time homeowners are. But this is, you know, I, I feel for them and I'm, we don't know what we're supposed to do. Because we're supposed to look at it as if the house wasn't there. And if you came to us and say, this is the house I want to build, and we looked at the plans, we would have, we would have approved it, because it doesn't have the bedroom and it shows it 500 feet less than it is. So there's nothing wrong with it. So we'd be like, okay, go ahead. And now we come back when someone else, somebody, a reputable guy, has gone and checked at it and has been like, oh, by the way, the closet shouldn't be there. And there's 500 square feet that they're, you know, knowingly misreporting. What do you do, you know? These people are out more money than I'd even want to think about. And every minute, Mr. Garibaldi sits here is costing them more money. I, I, you know, I need, you're like, the builder's not here, the builder's lawyer's not here. Now, they're not putting up any defense whatsoever, all right. Okay, I'm done with my rant.
Well, Tom, I, I'd add to it too. I mean, I think we can all empathize, you know, with their personal hardship. I mean, it's, it's awful and as you said, they, you know, it's a horrific remedy. But we can't grant a variance on personal hardship either.
But you've done it.
Well, that variance was justified based on planning criteria that, on the C2 criteria, that the house did not, that conformed with the neighborhood.
As, as the, as the resolution does speak of exactly, same, same.
I'm just telling you what that resolution spoke to.
Right.
Mostly, primarily, it's.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I have it and I've, I've read it and, and same, same, well-qualified experts.
Correct.
Gave the same, same scenario and the board embraced it at that point. So I don't know what's changed in, in that three-month period of time, but, but that's, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that it will be considered and as, as to what was the temperament back at, at that point. And, and I get hardships and financial and all the other kinds of things, but, but it was, it was done before and I, and I think it was right then and would be right now. it was, it was done before, and I, and I think it was right then, and would be right now. It doesn't set precedent, these are unusual situations. The onus of, of chasing down a, a, a builder who's, who's taken advantage of, of a municipality, and, and first home time buyers at this late date is, is, is our own hardship. It's, it's bad, somebody said it was bad for both sides, but it's, it's, but it's horrible on, on, on our side to have spent the kind of money with the expectation of a house that was going to be built, and then to, to, to so severely penalize them for that is, I mean, if, if you don't, you know, we voluntarily came up with the information that this house was built larger, that was not picked up by the municipalities, like going to the IRS, I made a mistake on my tax return, you guys missed it. I'm not being critical of the town, but we voluntarily brought that forward. Could have, you know, we could have just said, let it go, we're just going to deal with, with that which is the violation. Did not do so, and, you know, we, we, that's not the way I practice, and that's not the way our, our professionals practice, nor might do my clients act that way. So we did the right thing, and I, and I think that that, that also should be taken into account, is that it was brought forward voluntarily, and we found it, we found the mistake and brought it forward to the board, and brought it forward to the town. And, and now you're saying, thank you very much, but, but 500, your master bedroom has to go because of that? That's very unfair.
I just want to say, based on your client's testimony earlier in her opening statement, she was aware before they bought the house that there were issues, and that the fact that they were moving, and they had to leave, they moved anyway, that's what the-
If I may, if I may correct you, it's the, when she, when she went to contract on the house, the house was acquired, and the, and the, the addendum, and, and rider, as well as the exhibit, which was the, which was the, the drawings of the house with the-
Before it was purchased.
Well-
Before it was purchased.
Before they went to closing, correct.
Correct.
They were not aware that there was a problem?
But it was before they went to closing.
That, that a bedroom, a small bed, that the house was built, and they had a month ago in that small bedroom, they, in the, in the bedroom, they had a, they had a closet that had to be framed, and, and took what, a couple days for the builder to finish? A rather minor thing, we're not putting a garage on, we're not doing the living room, dining room, it was a small room that was left. And the, the other curious thing, it's the same thing as the other application. The notification of the issue is a month before the closing. People that have given up their apartments in, both in New York, to come to New Jersey, had no place else to go with young children, and bingo, you have to close, or what do you do then? You're in a crisis mode. They, but they were not aware that, that by, by the building of that after the closing created an EG Far violation that they would have to go back to for a variance. Never, never, ever brought up. And I've done a lot of closings, a lot of new construction, represented a lot of builders. It's not unusual. It is unusual for something that would be an easy fix, but it was an intention on their part, and they weren't thinking that up to that point in time, they had a builder that they were quite comfortable with. The product is great, builds a good house. Everybody raves about how well it's done, he's built many of them in town. Nothing, nothing set them off to say that this was abnormal, because they've never done it before. And the professionals that they had did not raise any flags up. So, yeah, hindsight's always 20/20. But nothing, nothing, if they had to do it over again, I don't think anything would have changed insofar as them wanting to close, needing to close, and not feeling that if they did close, they were exposing themselves to something like this.
I, I think, I think we're kind of getting away from the-
I, I agree.
The, what, you know, the point here is that, you know, we're here to consider C1 or C2 variance, correct?
Yes, with the arguments that, that we're, we're raising. It's, it's a little bit more, more of a-
Yeah, we, we kind of went down the, the rabbit hole here.
Yeah, we're there.
And I'm probably the one who opened it, so.
That's why I appreciate, no, I appreciate, this board is very open, and I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. I mean, you're, you're doing your job, you're, you're, you're very thorough about that, and, and very dedicated towards it, and, and you can't question that, but-
Right.
I'm just saying that there may be a, a precedent created that would, would-
Right.
Change the thinking of people when it especially was done three months ago.
Yeah, but if you, you talk about precedents, you know, we, we start down, again, down the hole again, the guy, okay, another builder's like, well, that builder did it, I'll just do it again, and, you know.
But, but that, that's a fraud, they're, they're not, they're not, if they're intentionally committing a fraud and submitting false certifications to a municipality, that's, that's a chargeable offense.
There you go.
Well, it, it's a chargeable offense, there's a statute on that.
Yeah.
And, and that, and that can be done, but again, this-
No, I'm not, it's, the onus is not on that.
No, and that's what I'm saying, perhaps.
So can we, can we just touch on again, C2, and the criteria for the C2?
Right, I thought the-
I guess would just, because we've gotten so far away from that.
He could, he could repeat, and again, I would refer you for-
Scott, if you would just, Reader's Digest condensed version, C2, and, for, for me.
Sure. So again, I believe that there is not detriment to the neighborhood in that the building is well-designed, aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, built with materials that are similar to the homes adjacent and in the neighborhood. So I don't see any detriment in the fact that it's, has curb appeal, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a well-designed building. I'm not disagreeing that it's over, oversized, of course, but I don't see any detriment because I think it fits well within the context of the neighborhood.
Can I just ask you a question on that? I asked earlier whether or not the set, the other bulk requirements were met. Would you generally consider the fact that bulk requirements are met in terms of setback in height to be a demonstration of a lack of a negative impact?
Yes.
Okay.
So you could, you could essentially build a house similar to this one that would conform through EG Far and everything?
You, you can, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know-
Aesthetically, you could-
Okay, so we're, we're in a, I don't know, remember the houses over where you are, but, you know, a lot of the houses, they, you know, they're all split levels, and now they're tearing them down, and they're putting up-
Yeah.
Center hall colonials.
Yes.
So right now, you have miles of split levels and one center hall colonial, so it kind of doesn't fit in the neighborhood.
Right.
But as more, you know, as older house stock, as the house stock ages, people are going to keep doing this.
Yes.
And, you know, 20 years from now, you'll have one split level and miles of center hall colonials.
Yes.
And if they're properly designed, they will all generally look the same as the one that we have before us now.
Yes.
So, it, it, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the, 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 the negative, you know, requirement or non-negative requirement. So, you know, in, in 10 years, every house on their street could look exactly like theirs, although be built without having to come to the zoning board.
Right, and to that point, this house, if it was designed to have more two-story spaces within it, it could very well meet the EG Far requirements and still be the same exact house as it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I don't know that we've, we've said a lot, I don't know that we've gotten, gained any ground. Is there anybody who wants to make a motion on this? Or?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the application, as permitted, be approved.
Okay.
That the, that Scott has proven the, the requirements needed for the C2, and that, you know, in, in, no matter what we decide, it's not going to change the outside of the house. So, that, it should be approved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mrs. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanel?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuitt?
Yes.
Mr. Story Alley?
No.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bourne?
No.
Four yes, three no. You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, also, for your time, and it behooves us to do- Due diligence, because this cannot continue.
I can.
You cannot make victims of, you come in good faith, and I appreciate that. And it, as I said, it behooves us to find a solution that's not, it's not glenrock. And I expect a guest room.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
So, so we'll-
Members, please turn off all of your mics.